That the council. Anna, you want to call roll?
Uh, yes, Mayor, for this purpose, there's a forum. Uh, please stay present, Dr. Armando Cana, Mayor.
Present.
Jessica Ortega Ochoa, Councilwoman. Ruben D. Plata, Councilman.
Present.
Nori Gonzalez Garza, Mayor Pro Tem.
Present.
Alberto Vela, Councilman.
Present.
Mayor, uh, we have all five council members, uh, present, so we, that establishes a quorum.
I can officially call this meeting to order. And I'm calling for regular meeting agenda item, num- number two, uh, invocation and pledge of allegiance, uh, Mr. Perez, take it.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, everyone, um, appreciate, uh, our, our Zoom meeting and, and everyone to be able to log in. Uh, we do have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, uh, as follows. I ask everyone to please just bow your heads if, uh, you're able to. Heavenly Father, we seek wisdom daily.
Yeah.
Be with the elected officials making these decisions that affect the lives, the future of our families and community.
You remember.
Great thing, and encourage those in public health services and in the medical profession and all who commit themselves to caring for the sick. We ask you be with the first responders, bring your protection upon them, and give comfort to those who have lost loved ones. Remove all fear from our, our hearts, fill us with confidence in your care. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Right of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God, indivisible.
And deliver. And just for all.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, and, uh, call for regular meeting agenda item number three, proclamation, uh, Ms. Longoria.
Longoria.
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Mayor and council members, uh, proclamation of the city of Mission reads as follows. Whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the community development block grant program in nineteen seventy-four. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For the purpose of providing local governments with the financial resource to assist low and moderate income. And whereas the city of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs as has made a significant impact on our community through the funding of programs for youth and the elderly, housing assistance programs, economic development and water sewer and drainage improvements. And whereas the city of Mission and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems. And whereas the city of Mission adheres to policies set forth in Title Eight of the Civil Rights Legislation, further known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, which recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person to live in the housing of the, of the individual's choice. And whereas that legislation was adopted in April nineteen sixty-eight by President Lyndon B. Johnson, prohibiting discrimination in housing practices based on race, color, national origin, religion, familial status, handicap, for disability, and age. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, to hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, fair housing equals opportunity, and further, April thirteenth through the seventeenth, twenty twenty, as National City Government Week, celebrating the success of the community development block grant. Claim on this the thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty.
Do I hear a motion to approve of this proclamation?
Mayor, I approve.
Now, your motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Vela, right?
Yes.
Mr. Vela, second, uh, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, proclamation has been approved, Ms. Longoria, and I'm calling for regular meeting agenda item number four, for another proclamation by Chief Dominguez, Chief Dominguez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The, uh, proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunicators Week reads as follows. Whereas the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunications, such as nine-one-one operators and dispatchers, are dedicated to saving lives, they respond to tech in times of great need, and their specialized skill and calm caring presence are invaluable to the Lone Star State. Whereas the Commission on State Emergency Communication works with local and state governments to ensure reliable access to emergency telecommunications services to highlight, highlight the invaluable role of public safety telecommunications. The Commission designates a week in April for an awareness campaign. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most cruc- critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas at this time, we encourage all citizens of Mission to extend their appreciation to public safety telecommunications, their diligent efforts ensure that help is on the way when our citizens need it most. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby designate the week of April twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week proclaimed on this the thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second by Mr. Plata? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, proclamation has been approved, Chief Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm calling for regular meeting agenda item number five, Ms. Longoria.
Just for this census announcement, uh, I did want to say that the Mission self-response rate has come in at thirty-six point four as of, uh, four twelve twenty twenty. So we are doing, uh, good on, uh, responding, so we just encourage everybody to self-res- respond, uh, either by online or by phone.
In comparison to, in comparison to the county, uh, what is the county rate?
The county rate, uh, the, the state rate is forty-three point seven, Mayor, and the county, let me, uh, I'll get it.
That's okay, the state rate, so we can at least have something to compare it to.
Forty-three point. Are we going to see a video?
Yes, I, yes, I've got a video, uh, so everybody stand by. That's it for the video.
To add, Mayor, the Hidal County rate is thirty point seven, so we are a little bit higher than the Hidal County overall. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Uh, regular media agenda item number six, departmental report. You have it there, uh, in your packet. Is there any questions, anything that you want to ask any of the department heads at this time?
Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented in writing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, and the regular meeting agenda item number six has been approved, and we're asking for regular meeting agenda item number seven, on citizens' participation, and this I will direct it to Anna to see the logistics behind this.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, what I'd like to ask is anybody who does wish to, to participate in citizens' participation, if they can please use the section there on their phone, their reaction, where they can raise up their hand, and then we will call them by their phone number. So anybody who wishes to participate in executive, in citizens' participation, uh, please, under the reactions, raise your hand so that we can identify you. Uh, one last time, Mayor, anybody wishing to participate in citizens' participation, please do so at this time by using the reaction, uh, section on your Zoom and raise your hand. Mayor, I don't see anybody who has requested to be on citizens' participation or on our end.
Thank you, Anna. I'm moving right along, regular meeting agenda item one point zero, the public hearing. We, we have none, none of the public hearings, so there's no need to, and we're going to continue on to two point oh. Two point oh is consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The City Council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling any item in its entirety for a future date or time. The City Council may elect to go into executive session or any other item whether or, or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when they, when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. In this, I, I'm asking the council to, uh, consent agenda item two point zero as two point one and two point two.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve the consent agenda item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, consent agenda item two point one and two point two are approved, and moving to three point oh. Calling for three point one, and if Mr. Azavero's on, on, uh, online, if not, he's designated, you have the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, Suzie Luna, I'm the Assistant Planning Director for the Planning Department, and I will be presenting item three point two. Uh, three point one, sorry. It's a final plot approval.
Available to work on the twenty twenty census. Apply at twentytwentycensus.gov.
And remember, the twenty twenty census is safe and secure, so make sure that Mission counts. It's on PUD, the developer is working on devices in care of Nick Row, and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. The proposed subdivision is the fifth phase of the Loto subdivision located approximately three-tenth mile east of Pico Dome and mile one south. That's a plus. Are you, can you hear me?
I'm, uh, I, I think we have some technical problems, and I think it's on it right now. Right, Mr. Flores? I think, I think it's, uh, the, the video's, uh, the video's voice was missing on the video.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes, now you can.
Okay. The developer is proposing fifty-six, uh, single-family residential lots for water there, uh, it's an existing eight-inch water line along mile one south road, takes that eight-inch water line north along the south, uh, South Viento Dorado to connect it onto an existing eight-inch water line on the Loto Drive looping the system. Fire hydrants are shown as per fire marshal's direction. For sewer, the developer is proposing to extend an eight-inch sewer network along the, the Loto Drive and extend south on Viento Dorado. This would service all lots in Phase Five. Um, the develop, for streets and storm drains, the developer is proposing to extend the Loto Drive and propose a new extension of South Tecate Drive. This will be a fifty-foot right-of-way, thirty-two back-to-back street. As for the storm drains, the developer is proposing to install eight-inch curb inlets and install thirty RCB lines through Eastman on South Tecate Drive, sorry, South Viento Dorado, that will flow into an existing drain ditch adjacent to the north side of the property. Said existing drain dish discharges into Perizillo Drain Ditch within an ultimate outfall into the Mission Pilot Channel. Staff recommends approval subject to paying capital sewer recovery fees, dedication of right, water rights, compliance with model subdivision rules, and two street signs. The matter is not before you.
Thank you, uh, just to open it for, uh, for, I'll entertain a motion from any other council member.
I'm going to approve.
Standing, Mayor.
Now, we have a motion and a second to, to approve as presented, and this I open it for discussion. Any of the council members have a specific discussion on the item? If not, I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, item three point one is approved, and we're moving to item, calling for item three point two.
Mayor and Council, item three point two is the final plot approval for Mirabel subdivision, formerly known as Sherri Land View Estates. It's a private subdivision, and it's a re-subdivision of twenty-eight point two-five-nine acres out of the, out of Lot Two oh four Johnny Sherri subdivision. The developer is Domain Development Corp., and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This subdivision is currently zone R one. For sewer, I mean, I'm sorry, for water, the developer is proposing a loop eight-inch water system to an existing ten-inch line located along the South Sherri, South Sherri Road and Business eighty-three to provide water service to each lot. Fire hydrants are installed pursuant to fire marshal's direction. For sewer, the developer is proposing to connect an eight-inch sewer line to a twelve-inch sewer line along Business eighty-three. For street and storm drainage, the subdivision has furnished to Business eighty-three and Sherri Road. Sherri Road has a future right-of-way requirement of a hundred and twenty feet, and Business eighty-three has a future right-of-way requirement of a hundred feet. It is noted that the developer is dedicating additional right-of-way that is needed on both Sherri and Business eighty-three to comply with the MPO requirement. The internal lots will be funding a fifty-foot right-of-way, thirty-two back-to-back street built to the city construction specifications. Five-foot sidewalks will be required along Business eighty-three. Sherri Road currently has sidewalks. Drainage for the subdivision shall consist of surface runoff from the lot into proposed street. The north, the north side commercial shall flow north into two proposed drain ditches with an eight-inch splitter and tech dot storm drain system along Business eighty-three. The south side residential will flow into a proposed drain ditch discharging to the east via an eight-inch splitter line into the tech start, tech start storm drain system. The existing City of Mission storm drain system and the tech start drain storm system flows south, ultimately discharging into the Mission inlet. Staff recommends approval subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, comply with street alignment policy, must pay the capital sewer and park fees, and the installation of five-foot sidewalks along Business eighty-three. This matter is not before you.
Thank you. I open it for a, and I know, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and just open it for a final discussion by any other council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, item three point two is approved, and I have called for three point three, which is approval of a resolution sixteen fifty-four. Mr. David Flores.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, on April third, twenty twenty, AP Texas, I filed an application for approval of a distribution cost recovery factor seeking an increase in distribution revenues of approximately thirty-nine point eight-seven million dollars. This equates to approximately a dollar and eighty-three cents increase to the average residential, uh, customer's bill from the rates recently approved by the company's rate case. The resolution authorizes the city to join with cities served by AEP to evaluate the filing and authorizes the hiring of Lord, Lloyd Gossett and, uh, consultants to review the filing, negotiate with the company, and make recommendations to the city regarding the reasonable rates. So we are asking at this point to, to, uh, to, to deny the, the rate increase at this time. This gives us sixty days, uh, this gives Lloyd Gossett sixty days to be able to, to respond. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
And just I open it for any discussion by the council, or, or I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and, and my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Flores, is that we're approving denial of the, of the distribution rates and charges in allowing our, uh, the hiring of, of Lloyd, uh, Gossett and consultants to review with a AEP, am I correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions by any other council members?
I- is there a, a charge to the city for the service?
There, it said no cost to the city, ma'am.
Okay, just to be sure.
Yes.
Any other questions? This I open it for, uh, for, uh, uh, for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, uh, three point three, approval of resolution sixteen fifty-four has been approved, and I'm calling for si- three point four agenda item. Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor and City Council members. Uh, agenda item, uh, three point four is the approval of Santa Sewer Service Agreement between the City of Mission and Lone Star Citrus Growers. The agreement entails the permitting of Lone Star Citrus Grower to dispose of industrial wastewater at the City of Mission Industrial Pre-Training Plant for a period of two years. Fees associated, associated with disposal are based on meter readings per gallon, industrial, uh, waste BOD, which is the biochemical oxygen demand, and the suspended solid surcharge as described in the attacking agreement. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval of agreement with Lone Star, Lone Star Citrus Growers, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Salinas, I'll open it for a council member, uh, for a motion.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second, and this is open it for a discussion, specific discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, item three point four has been approved, Mr. Salinas, and I'm calling for three point five, Mr. Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Authorize the purchase of commercial dumpsters on an ass near basement with waste to cliff, waste to cliff, MFG, that's the LLC via buyboard contract number five nine nine dash nineteen for the City Sanitation Department. The dumpsters will be used for the commercial accounts. Estimated cost, estimated cost is fifty-five thousand. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I open it for a motion by any other council member.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Then we have a second, and this I open it for discussion. Any specific questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, and three point five is approved, Mr. Gutierrez, and I'm calling for three point six, Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item three point six is the approval of the tax collections report for February twenty twenty. The twenty nineteen total tax levy for taxes was twenty-two million, nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents, and the amount of collections as of February twenty ninth, twenty twenty was twenty million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, which represents ninety point fifty-five percent of the total twenty nineteen tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for delinquent taxes was two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand with thirty-five cents, and the amount of collections as of February twenty nine, twenty twenty is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven dollars and sixty cents, which represents ten point zero eight percent of the total tax levies from previous years. Staff and city manager and approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, uh, and this I open it for discussion. Any specific questions on the summary? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point six is approved, and, uh, calling for three point seven, Ms. Vela.
Item three point seven is the approval of the February twenty twenty financial statements. Total revenues for the month were nine million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and total expenditures were thirteen million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of twenty-three million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, and a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, uh, three point seven is approved, Ms. Vela, so I'm calling for three point eight, Ms. Vela.
Item three point eight is the approval of the attached budget amendment from the MEDC Fund. This amendment is fifty thousand of expenditures for the approval of an ince- of an incentive for a development located at thirty-seven hundred Plantation Grove Boulevard in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand each year for ten years under Contu Bigelow's Doing Business as the Bungalows. MEDC Board approved this amendment on March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion, any, any questions on the budget amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, three point eight is approved, Ms. Vela, and I call for three point nine, Ms. Mongia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item three point nine is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option with Deer Oaks EAP Services. This would be our second and final renewal option with Deer Oaks. There is no increase in rates, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, uh, and this I open it for discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, three point nine is approved, Ms. Mongia, and I'm calling for three point ten.
Yes, Mayor, item three point ten is the authorization to execute our first one-year renewal option for basic life and ADND, voluntary life, and long-term disability. This will be our first renewal option with UNAM. There is no increase in rates, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. Any specific questions?
I do, Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
How has it been going with the insurance committee?
I will, uh, let Randy, uh, answer that question, and Mr. Perez, would you answer that question?
I guess, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, we, we have met as a committee, we, we do have, uh, the, the meeting, uh, went well, uh, we went over any and all, uh, insurances that the City of Mission currently has, and then also to, uh, went over briefly the plans, uh, that each of the, the, the insurances carry, as well as, uh, any future RFPs that are coming up. We do have a couple that are, are, we're, we're going to be requesting for, for proposals in the upcoming months that, uh, was discussed at the committee, and at that point, uh, we are planning for that, uh, so it, it has been going well. We have been receiving a lot of input from the, each of the committee members, and, uh, very beneficial.
Thank you, Randy.
Any, uh, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, three point ten, Ms. Mongia is approved, and I'm calling for three point eleven, Chief Dominguez.
Mayor and City Council, uh, item three eleven is authorization to allow the purchase of a firearm to honorably retired peace officer Jose C. Macias, Mission Police Lieutenant in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section six fourteen point oh fifty-one. Honorably retired peace officer Jose C. Macias has requested to purchase his Glock seventeen Generation Four nine-millimeter service weapon, zero number B A C G dash five two seven, from the Mission Police Department. Under the Texas Government Code, Section six fourteen. Under the Texas Government Code, section six fourteen oh fifty-one, an honorably retired peace officer may purchase his service weapon from a governmental entity in which he or she was commissioned. The purchase price for the weapon would be four hundred and nine dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval for the sale of the weapon to honorably retired Lieutenant Jose C. Macias.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Chief, it will also include a whole harmless contract, am I correct?
Yes, sir. It's already been typed up, sir. We were just waiting for approval, sir, and he's agreed to sign off on it before I I do hand him the weapon, and obviously, he's gonna pay the four hundred and nine dollars for the weapon.
Not a problem, chief. I just wanna make sure that that is the standard operating procedure for any purchases, any sales that we do of any of our police weapons.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any any other comments, any other questions by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and we'll three point eleven is authorized with honors, chief, so you let him know that the council has approved the the sale.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much.
Three point twelve, I'm calling for three point twelve, which would be approval of resolution sixteen fifty-five, Mr. Cardosa.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Three point one two is the approval of resolution sixteen fifty-five, amended resolution number sixteen fifty-three of the City Council of the City of Mission, adopting the County of Hidalgo's second amended emergency order, instituting subsequent measures due to public health emergencies regarding COVID-nineteen pandemic. On April seventh, an order was issued by County Judge Richard Cortez. The amend includes twenty-four hour curfew for all people under the age of seventeen, the use of facial coverings, the existing shelter-at-home mandate, and there will be a new curfew for everyone ages eighteen and older between eleven P M and five E M. The community child care services also address provide care for the essential workers. The emergency order is extended through April thirtieth, twenty twenty, at eleven fifty-nine P M.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval, but I would like for, can we put it towards April seventh when it originally was done?
Let's let's let me entertain the motion first and then and second, and then I'll I'll let you open the discussion, okay? We have a motion on the floor? You said yes, right, Ms. Wachoa?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second on the opening for discussion. Ms. Wachoa, you wanna you wanna retroactive back to?
Yes, Mayor, because in our town, we had I had questions back and forth. There was ten or eleven. I don't know if law enforcement has been stopping people during those weeks, during this past week, and it was supposed to be eleven, but we haven't had a meeting.
Mayor, the directive given to the P D was this past week was to was to go to eleven P M. So I don't believe there are any any issues since the seventh of April, because we've kind of been abiding internally with the eleven P M curfew who likely adopted at this meeting.
And if if there is, Mr. Martinez, you'll take care of it, right?
Absolutely. If there is, if given for curfew for ten P M in this last week, we'll have them dismissed.
Thank you.
Yes, one of the things that I mentioned to the staff is is that I wanna I wanna align everything to the county and the and the state for, because we have a lot of people from Mission that go work in Russell and Arlington and West Laco and so forth, and 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 you know, they 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 call all the time. And you know, because of the difference in enforcement, that's one of the reasons why I recommended to go to eleven P M and not call for a city ordinance to bring it down to ten. So so are there any other questions by any of the council? Now, I do have one question more, and and it's in maybe Mr. Martinez or Mr. Cardosa can answer it. The last the last order by executive order by the county judge, was it extended through April the thirtieth or to the middle of May?
The thirtieth, Mayor.
April the thirtieth. Okay, so we'll do extended to April the thirtieth, and and I'll put the council on standby in case we need to we need to come back into the special meeting or to be able to address those the the issues as they come along, because this is a very fluid, new new novice virus that's happening to the to 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 our our community, and and we need to we need to be be on standby for that in the event that we need the continuity of government to to continue operating in the and aligning ourselves with the with the county judge judges' orders and the governor's order also. Without further ado, I open it for again for last call for any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and three point twelve, resolution sixteen fifty-five is approved and aligned with the county judge's executive order all the way to April the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Calling for agenda item number three point thirteen, Mr. Belmonte.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item three point thirteen, consideration of best and final proposals regarding consulting services for presidential permit renewal for the Madero Bridge Project. Mr. Rio Villarreal submitted his best and final proposal at six thousand per month for a six-month period representation and reimbursement for all travel expenses when applicable while conducting duties. Seeking council direction on this item.
This I will entertain a motion to approve as the as requested by Mr. Rio Villarreal, or if anything else in the point of discussion, we can make any any comments or any changes or any concerns that you have. Open it for, and and one of the things that I do wanna add to it is that this if this contract is approved, it won't be effective till 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 either May first or June first, depending on the on the on the covert situation, since we just extended the the executive order to April the thirtieth. There might be an expectation that 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 it may be, so we would start him on on May the first if approved, or if not, if it was extended into May, then you'll go to June the first, and if we extend it to June, it'll go to July the first, if approved by the council.
May I approve?
We have a motion to approve the the final proposal. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion. Any any discussion by any of the council members? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Nay. So we have one nay. So so the Mr. Bella did please declare your vote.
Aye.
Aye. So it's it'll be four to one. Approved with the conditions of the of the, we will start him. Mr. Belmonte, there's the data that's May the first, and and then if we need to extend it, tell them that there's gonna be an option that we won't we won't it won't be effective till June the first.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions? And then for that, I will call the four point zero unfinished business. We will have none. And then I'll move over to five point oh routine matters. Five point one, city manager's comments of Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I do just wanna, you know, make make aware of everyone in the public that we are, of course, we are asking everyone's cooperation with, you know, the orders that are down not only at the county level, but at the at the city level. Of course, it's for everyone's safety, and we want everyone, that's our priority, everyone's safety in our community. And so we ask for this cooperation and that we adhere to the C D C guidelines when we're out in in public. Also, just wanted to, we do post all our information, updates and so forth in our website daily and also in our social media outlets. So again, I thank each and every one of you for cooperating during this difficult time. I know it's an adjustment for everyone, but if we can please cooperate and with our safety of our citizens as our priority. So I I do I do wanna thank you all for that. Another also, we do have an executive session item that we will be we will be off this call and and going into the executive session call. And then once we're finished with the executive session call, we'll go back into this regular session call. So that's all I have, sir, for now.
Thank you, and I'll call for five point two, which is the mayor's comment. I I wanna personally thank all the all the staff members from the department heads all the way to the field persons for the City of Mission for for continuing to to shine for the health and safety of our of our community, you know, and and keeping it a priority. I know that that as far as communications are, that you all meet twice twice a day, you know, to communicate as a team, and and things are things are moving right along. Again, like I've said, it is a challenging time, you know, as far as as far as it is, but it is the time where we can where we can join together, and together we can we can be able to to convert this crisis back to normal operations, and 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 we can do it together and as one, and there's only one mission team, you know. This is Team Mission, and and we're also asking what the echoing what Mr. Perez said about the health and safety and staying at home and following the rules. And and the best thing to do is just do it for the purpose of your your own safety, your own safety, and 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 that that will take care of and and Happy Easter or whatever religion that you're from. You know, I would like to let you all know that that yesterday was a very, very different day for for the Catholic religion. I know, which is that's my faith, however, your faith is honored in the City of Mission, because we have the freedom of of religion in Mission. And and I do wanna let you know that that times are changing, and if I knew what was gonna happen in the next twenty-four hours, I will let you know. But without further ado, I will call for item number five point three, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Bella, and since that's the routine that we normally do, is let Mr. Bella call all the comments. Mr. Bella, you have the floor.
No comment today.
Mr. Bella, thank you very much. I will call Mayor Protem Nori Gasa. You, any comments on five point?
Just wanna echo, stay home and stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Gasa. And Mr. Plata?
Just the same thing, stay home, stay safe, and maybe I would like to maybe in the future, get a meeting with our economic development, and it can be through Zoom our Chamber of Commerce board and see what we can do for our business community. I mean, I know people have been hurrying, and at least so they can see that, I mean, if there's any possibilities, we can be of any help to them. I think this is the time where the chamber, the economic development, and the city can plan something to see what we can do to help our business community, even when we get ready to open up. Maybe give them some tips, advice about what to do. I know things are gonna get better, and we had to get ready for that.
Mr. Plata, I wanna let you know that officially, I have asked the city manager, and and I will call back the city manager after after this, after everybody, the council gets a right to go back to five point one, so he can give an overview of the committee that that I have appointed for for operations to bring to to align with what you what you're thinking, sir. Okay? Any other, Mr. Plata, anything else you wanna add?
No, thank you, and thank you for all our staff for doing a great job, and our media department for keeping us informed, our H R for working with our staff, and I know we'll make it through. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. Ms. Wachoa?
Just for everybody to be home and and stay safe, and I wanna personally thank our E O C committee and all our staff, because they have done tireless hours. And sometimes their word goes unnoticed or unthanked, and so I just wanna thank them, because I do know whenever our residents and our constituents have any questions, we refer them. We refer it to them, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll call back five point one, the city manager's comment, and I I do wanna let you know that that Brenda Enriquez from the Greater Mission Chamber has was is part of our emergency operational plan, you know, and part of our recovery plan, and she's been working with the with the businesses hand in hand with our with our economic development, Mr. Danny Silva also. And 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 just to let you know that we do, we do wanna keep the small businesses in mind. So if you, you know, and our restaurants also, you know, so I I make it a plan, a point to at least once a day, I order out, I order out just to help the the community as a whole. And five point one, city manager's comment, can you give an overview on the committee?
I guess so. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everyone, again. Like the mayor mentioned, we are as staff working on a business economic recovery committee, and that's something that I know, Mr. Plata, you mentioned. So what this committee will will be, it would be led by our Chamber of Commerce with the partnership with some business community members as well as staff and our economic development. And so basically, the the purpose is is to do an economic recovery committee for small businesses to be able to provide some guidance and also resources that are available for small businesses and or businesses in our community to be able to overcome this pandemic through this hardship that that businesses have been encountering. And so that is that is what we're currently working on. And once we have all the information and the plan in place, we'll go ahead and share that with the the council and of course, our our community to be able to to provide feedback and then also share the resources and information that we have for our business community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Moving right along with the with the agenda, at this time, I I have to call six point oh, the executive session pursuant to V T C A Government Code, section fifty-five point zero zero one, and I will entertain a motion by one of the council persons.
So moved.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes, and we'll move into executive session. So we're going to be moving to a a different portal, and then we're gonna come back to this portal at the end to 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 be able to to do six point one eight and six point two and seven point oh. Any questions before we sign off?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How are we gonna do that?
You should get a link, and if you don't have a link, I know Mr. Flores is sending you the link to the to the secure the secured meeting site.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So I I went ahead and sent all the information for executive session, the to to be able to get into the executive session call through through each of your phone devices, and that way we can join into the call, and then once we're done with that executive session call, we'll come back to this regular session call.
It's not a link, it's a phone number we're gonna call, correct?
Yes, it's a it's a phone, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Zero zero one, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Mr. Bella, second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we're back in session.
Mayor, you're muted somehow, and I can't, there you go.
It was probably me.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so I need to guess, I need to start from this. Did we go through the motion? Was it?
Yes, Mayor. Once you call the item on executive, we can I can offer you a motion, Mayor.
Six point one eight, the item has been called. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor?
Yes, sir. I would require a motion to draft policy as discussed in executive session, and this is a directive being made by the council to the city manager and human resource.
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Bella, and this I open it for discussion. Make sure, Mr. Martinez, that the that the that the term that the term first responder will be first responders slash employee.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And this I open it for final discussion by any of the council members or uh to add any anything in public, if you wanna do any anything in public. If not, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign? Uh motion carries, uh six point one A is approved, and I'm calling for for uh seven point oh for adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm in the motion.
Bella, you you're recognized, and Ms. Ochoa, you you're recognized as a second for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh motion carries and uh we're adjourned.
All right, thank you all. Uh if you have any comments or suggestions, uh please forward them to city manager's office, direct it to myself. I'd like to get your feedback on how well the meeting went and what we could do to improve. We thank you all, and uh this ends this call. Have a great day.